Everyone. Welcome to our committee, the whole. I feel like I'm echoing to our work session, supporting community through quality public service. We have an agenda here that we've been waiting a little bit for one of the guest speakers, and they're not here right now, so we'll just move on. But in the packet, we have our minutes from our January meeting. And then we also have minutes from the standing committees on information only from the airport advisory, budget and facility advisory, building committee, highway advisory committee, and personnel committee for us to look over. So joining us right now is Bob Thompson, who's going to fill us in on the Sawtooth Bluff master plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. So today, I just have some information to share with you. We will be bringing this topic to a regular meeting sometime in the future. But I wanted to sit down with you guys and see what kind of questions you might have regarding this topic and see if there's any other information I can gather for you before, you know, we do take it to a regular meeting for some kind of a resolution or decision to be made on this property. So I did, you know, give kind of a brief summary. I'm not sure if any or all of you are familiar with the, you know, John Sheaf property up near the Sawtooth Bluffs. I did, you know, a quick map check. It looks like we have almost 600 acres up in the Sawtooth Bluffs. That is either, you know, city-owned or tax forfeit land. And obviously, there was a Sawtooth Bluff master plan that was developed. I don't know what year that was developed, but it's been here, you know, since I've been here in 2016. That plan includes a lot of recreational uses, camping, you know, hiking trails, biking trails, some residential area, and just a mix of uses. I know Land Services currently in the process of doing a survey on the Sawtooth Bluff master plan. I'm not sure if you guys have seen that on the website, but, you know, they're asking some questions of the public. It sounds like they're getting a good response, a good number of responses to that survey. You know, so that is also something you guys will be able to take a look at, you know, before making any kind of decisions on this. But what we're really trying to hone in on is this John Sheaf property. For the topic of the discussion today is, you know, there's a number of different ways that the county could approach this. And, you know, one of them being is that the county could say, well, you know, we don't really have an interest in doing anything with that John Sheaf property. It doesn't, you know, affect our master plan. It's aside from the master plan. John has brought up a lot of good points that technically, right now, through this court document that was attached to the packet, Judge Hanke has determined that there is a legal access right to access the property through these old plats. I think these were recorded in like 1901 or 1903, but anything prior to 1903 didn't have to have a public dedication in order to become a public roadway. Now, those roads were never developed up there, but they are platted out, and that plat is surveyed. So according to the Hanke ruling, those roads have been dedicated to the public. And Mr. Sheaf would have a right to go in and develop that road right across the Sawtooth Bluff property.
Question on back then when it was drafted, what was the definition of a road as far as width? In other words, is there anything that's problematic, or is it just subjective? And then whatever it is now, that would be customary based upon the day's definition of what road is?
You know, I'm not sure that there is a width definition within those plats. I don't even know if there's measurements or, you know, survey increments or anything like that. So I don't, that would probably get into more of a legal question of, you know, if the road wasn't developed, but it was technically considered to be dedicated to the public, to what extent does a developer have to, you know, to what level of development do they have to meet? Is it a city standard or something along those lines? I don't know if the county has a standard, but, you know, those get into something that kind of is outside of my, you know, knowledge and expertise.
I can appreciate that, but it's one of the questions should be asked. When it says that it's identified that it's a road, if it's not defined in the document, then we should see what we can figure out, what's that look like?
Right, and it is our understanding that, you know, if Sheaf was to move ahead and, you know, decided to start working on developing a road in there, you know, currently, he would have to follow those streets and alleyways that are defined in the plat. There's a lot of challenges with elevation changes and side hill cutting and things like that. But it is our understanding that they would have to be developed to a certain standard. You know, a water management, stormwater management plan engineered would have to be developed. So there certainly would be some expense for John involved if he was to follow, you know, the platted roads that are existing in the legal documents. John and his attorney have asked the county to grant a preferred access route, which, you know, would probably have less impact on the Sawtooth Bluffs. It actually follows an old, I think, logging road that hasn't been maintained in many years, but there is a bit of a road that goes the majority of the way into Sheaf's property. I think there's another 100 or 200 feet that this old forest road doesn't quite make it the whole way there. So Sheaf has approached the county and asked us and said, you know, rather than developing this on those platted roadways, would the county be willing to grant an easement for a preferred access route that would be, you know, less challenging as far as the elevation changes and contours of the land? So there's a lot going on here. Right now, if Mr. Sheaf wanted to, he could effectively, you know, get his engineered road plan, and he could bring in the equipment and machinery and start making the road on the Sawtooth Bluff property. So that's where, you know, I've talked about this with Rowan a little bit. We've sat down with Sheaf and Sheaf's attorney, Tyson Smith. And, you know, one of the ideas that we had started kicking around was, and this apparently had been discussed about a decade ago, is potentially doing a land swap with Sheaf with some of our other county tax forfeit land. Now, you know, I don't know that, we haven't pinned down any suggested properties. You know, obviously, we do have some very valuable properties. We have some less valuable properties. And, you know, the board can kind of determine if that's a route they want to go. And another alternative would be to, you know, outright purchase the property from Mr. Sheaf. So John did provide an appraisal, which was back in, I think, 2023. Let me see if I have it in my notes.
Did he use the same firm that the DNR used?
No. John used an appraisal company out of Duluth. And so it looks like, you know, they had come up with, I think, a value of $500,000, but that was assuming that a road was cut in. So they had estimated expenses for that road to be $170,000, $180,000, somewhere in that ballpark. So that brings the value of the property as is down to about $330,000, according to the appraisal that John Sheaf provided. I did take the appraisal and used all of the same adjustments that their appraiser used, but just put in some more recent comparables. We've actually had, you know, a couple of 40s and an 80 sell outside of the Greater Graham Ray area. And I think that the comparables that I used are a better representation of those large tract sales. We had an 80-acre parcel on County Road Seven, or sorry, Pike Lake Road, right at the end of Pike Lake Road where it meets County Road Seven. That sold for $300,000. That has electricity and road and internet right there at the, and it has legal access right off of a, you know, road, a well-developed road. The Sheaf parcel is up on the Sawtooth Bluffs. You know, location-wise, it might get some special views, but the property out on Pike Lake Road also has views of Lake Superior. I think its comparison is very close to the 80 acres that Sheaf owns. So, you know, basically, what I've developed is a quick comp grid, like you would see at our Board of Appeal and Equilization meetings. And using those comps that I suggested and the adjustments that his appraiser was using, which was like a 5% or 10% based on, you know, acreage differences and things like that, and then subtracting out the cost of the road, I came up with a value of $133,000 as is, closer to $130,000 with no road access currently as it sits. And then, you know, my value, if it did have road access, would be that $300,000, similar to the sale on Pike Lake Road.
Have you had that conversation with John?
So we just had a brief conversation. He does know that number. He knows that number that I came up with. Obviously, I wasn't speaking on behalf of the county of, you know, if the county was interested in this parcel, I don't know where that offer would start. I don't, you know, I don't know if it would require ordering an appraisal or if you guys would look at some of those numbers. Currently, we have it assessed at $176,000. So our assessment is over what that comp grid came out to. You know, it's never been appealed. We've never looked at it on a very specific basis, but it just falls into those rates per acre that we have broken out for the different areas of the county and different neighborhoods. So interestingly, John did share with me, back in, I think it was 2020, we were talking about potentially doing a bit of a swap. So what John was requesting is that we would give legal access across the Sawtooth Bluffs in an easement that we were told would never be developed, that it was only for the Minnesota Land Trust so that they had the legal right to access the property. And in turn, John would enroll the property into a conservation easement with the Minnesota Land Trust. They would compensate him. They would cut him a check for his rights to the land. And then there would be remaining rights. John would have remaining rights left over to the property, but, you know, he would give up all the rights to develop it or sell it to a developer. And John was to be compensated for that by the land trust $94,000. So then John would deed the property and the remaining interests over to the county so it would be under county ownership. Now, there were two concerns that I'm aware of that I had a conversation with previous attorney Molly Hickin regarding, one, that that access easement was not a guarantee to never be developed. It was, it was said, it was verbally spoken, but they weren't willing to put it into the document, that this was, you know, merely a matter of legal right to access the property that would never be developed. So that gave us a little bit of reservation. And then the other part of it was, you know, I think part of that, the conservation easement allowed for like a campsite off of the Superior hiking trail up there. And it also said that the owner of the property would be responsible for, you know, removing any unpermitted structures, removing trash that might be left behind by visitors to the property. So it also kind of created this obligation of maintenance, which we currently don't have on the property. It's privately owned. The county doesn't have an obligation to do those things. So that whole discussion kind of stalled out, and I think the Minnesota Land Trust has now stepped away from the conversation. And I think that they're only willing to reengage if the county is willing to engage and pursue that avenue. I do think that is still an option on the table, if the county was interested in acquiring this property with a conservation easement at no cost. It would probably still require granting that access easement, which, you know, that brings up another question is, now that the court has proven that John has legal access, you know, why isn't the land trust still interested now that they've gotten that component of legal access? So that's interesting to me, you know, is why is the Minnesota Land Trust no longer engaging considering that the courts determined there is legal access? Now, you know, another thing that we haven't necessarily talked about between Rowan and I and the attorney are, you know, we, the county does have the right, we could abandon that plat, which would basically say it's no longer a public road, and John would no longer have legal access. He couldn't develop the road across the Sawtooth Bluffs. But if John loses legal access to the property, they can petition the courts for a cartway or an easement. So then it may very well end up that it's going along this preferred access route if the judge determines that that's the most feasible route. However, you cannot get a cartway across tax forfeit land, so it would potentially have to go to a private landowner to grant, if it was a court-ordered cartway. So there's a lot going on there. And, you know, one of the options that John Sheaf, that Tyson Smith had suggested was that the county could simply abandon those plats. Or what's the term for it? Vacate the plat. So, but I think that that kind of gives them another opportunity to go back to the judge and say, hey, we want this different route. We want another route to the property because we no longer have legal access. So there's a whole lot going on there. And what I'm asking the board to kind of think about and maybe come up with some questions that we need answered are, you know, is this 80-acre parcel, is it integral to the Sawtooth Bluff development? I mean, if we're talking about developing a regional park recreational uses up there, does the county have an interest in preventing this from potentially becoming a development of residential homes? Is that something that the county has an interest in maintaining the control over what happens to this property? If we walk away from the negotiation table with Mr. Sheaf, we were told that he would likely sell it to a developer. And, you know, they seem to say that there were interested parties in the property. I'm not real familiar with the zoning restrictions in that area, but it is within the two-mile buffer of the city, which means the city has the authority over the area. And I'm not sure, by the way that Tyson Smith had discussed it, they don't have to go through a whole subdivision process in that area because it falls under the city's jurisdiction. So I'm not real familiar. Maybe Land Services would be better to answer that question of, you know. I do think there is still a minimum lot size, you know, standard, but I don't think they have to go through the administrative subdivision process and get approval from the county because it's within that two-mile buffer of the city. So it sounds like it is a property that would spark interest amongst developers because there's some less restrictive zoning ordinances that impact that parcel. So.
Apologize.
Yeah. I'll just talk, try to talk a little. Are you hearing it?
I just had somebody say that they were having a hard time hearing.
Okay, I understand. Appreciate that. So I apologize if this is redundant for other commissioners, but what's John's objective?
Well, you know, I guess I don't want to speak on behalf of John, but I think John wants to move on from this investment. I think John would either like to sell it to a developer or somehow get it into the hands of the county. But either path that John is taking, I think, involves some financial compensation to John.
Okay, so, I mean, that's helpful to know what his objective is. And so it's basically, it's a courtesy, almost like a first right of refusal. And so he's coming to us, and so we have to evaluate in the context of what our long-range master plan is. And so considerations, it's just the questions that need to be asked to define that, trying to be responsible. And based upon the conversation, it sounds like if we were to take this parcel of land, if he goes with the conservation, are we tied into that conservation if we take that? We're talking about the same parcel. This is not a different parcel?
It's the same parcel. So if John were to enroll it into a conservation easement, the conservation easement agreement that I read, you know, it included that management aspect of keeping it free of trash and keeping it free of unapproved. You know, if somebody went up and built a deer stand up there, the county would have to potentially go remove it if the county were to accept that donation of the land with the remaining interest. So the remaining interest is, you know, we're the fee holder of the title of the property, but there are all kinds of restrictive covenants on that property that, you know, it couldn't be developed or sold or things like that.
And so from our standpoint, it sounds like, so John is saying that, here's a couple of options. You could buy it outright. We could swap land. Or I could get the money from putting in a conservation. And then we, and then would he be satisfied with that? Or is he asking for us to pay to buy it with a reduced cost because it's put into land conservancy?
So if it, my understanding is if it goes into the land trust or the nature, if it goes into a conservation easement, it would be a no-cost acquisition by the county. He would effectively get compensated for that conservation easement and give any of the remaining rights over to the county. So.
Right now, there's tax being collected on this property.
Correct.
Based upon its classification. And we would have to look at the ongoing cost and responsibility in the donated scenario as opposed to the outright purchase without that obligation. So, I mean, we'd all have our impressions relative to that scenario. My recommendation would be that, if you would be willing to, is that you write down every possible question from your perspective that you think we should ask. And then we should consider, you know, what questions we might have. And then from the long-range plan standpoint, how does that weigh in? So if we look at it from every standpoint, I mean, the legal from the land use and from our master plan kind of thing, and from the obligation from the cost, I would say we should just look at all of the component parts and then ask questions from the perspective of the component part, and then we could make an informed decision.
Okay, and, you know, I mean, if you pay close attention to that original Sawtooth Bluff master plan, which, you know, I don't know, is the board going to review that? Are they going to want to modify that? Are they going to completely scrap it? You know, I don't know where the direction of the board might go on the original Sawtooth Bluff master plan, but the conservation easement, it doesn't appear to conflict with the Sawtooth Bluff master plan. You know, it would be an area of trails, effectively, maybe a campsite. And, you know, there, if the county develops a regional park up there, there will certainly be some maintenance and management component that goes along with it, similar to if we were to get this property from Sheaf in a conservation easement. You know, it would effectively, I think, it would jive with the existing use of the master plan adjacent with all those trails up in the area. So, you know, if the county isn't concerned about the conservation easement and the language in the conservation easement, that might be the easiest path forward. But at the same time, I think that the county should ask the question of, you know, if this property was developed into a residential development, does that conflict with the Sawtooth Bluffs adjacent? Or does it conflict with county priorities? I mean, you know, I don't know that, right now, if John sells it to a developer, it's probably not going to go the route of affordable housing. It's going to be a high-end development up there with very valuable lots. So, you know, that's not necessarily a county priority, but it does add tax base. You know, there would be, there would potentially be several lots up there, 10 lots up there maybe, 20 lots, that, you know, could be high-end homes and potentially with a view of Lake Superior. I've never actually walked the property myself, but I do think there would be an opportunity for some really nice residential development sites up there. So, you know, those are kind of the main issues of, does the county, and then if you look at it from a perspective of, what if the county was to try and purchase this property from Sheaf and control the property without any encumbrances? Now, the Sawtooth Bluff could also incorporate that. And maybe, you know, if there is a period of reviewing or modifying that Sawtooth Bluff master plan, now this additional 80 acres could be incorporated. So, you know, there's a whole lot to consider. And I think the first question is, does this 80 acres impact what we want to see happen on the Sawtooth Bluffs? If there was a development of residential houses there, would it have that negative impact? And I know, you know, from members of the community, from what I've heard from past conversations on this topic, is nobody wants development up there. They don't want houses up there. They don't want lights, you know, affecting the dark sky. But at the same time, you know, we also talk about, we don't have a big tax base. We have 92% public-owned lands. So, you know, there's a lot going on in this conversation, and it kind of talks to a lot of our core values of the county as to what direction the county wants to go on this one. You know, it would be, I think, the easiest path would be to engage the Minnesota Land Trust again and potentially work out a scenario where the county gets that property for free. You know, the remaining interest in.
It would seem to me, from my perspective, what I see, the easiest path would be a land swap because we wouldn't have the encumbrance that would come with the easement. I mean, with the, you know, conservation land. But when something's as unwieldy as this because there's so many factors, I think that's why you have to put together a framework to look at all these factors in the context of the what-ifs, and then you match that up with your values. And so a lot of times, something happens, you say, you know, we've been wanting to do this. We want to do this. This is the piece of the puzzle that pulls that all together. You know, so if that's the case, then consider that element of it. But if it's developed and we say, boy, we could get more tax base, that'd be great, but you're looking at it from that perspective and not inclusive of the other.
Right.
The developer would be required to put the infrastructure on, so that's not going to be a burden on the county. But I, so I would say that we just, we look at it from this perspective, this perspective, this perspective, and ask all the questions in that context and then see where it aligns.
So like kind of giving a rundown of, you know, what's the cost to the county in each scenario? What's the benefit to the county in each scenario? And what's the downside in each scenario?
Is there any kind of a buffer? I'm not sure. Is this located pretty much at the top of the development? Is there any kind of buffer?
It's to the west.
It's to the west of the original Sawtooth Bluff master plan, but as far as like the ridge line there, I think it's kind of right there at the top and right at the peak there.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
There is also a property that's owned by a private citizen that's directly south of the Sheaf property. And, you know, I don't know if there has been any engagement with that property owner who lives in Arizona. It's not developed. But it would seem rather awkward just looking at it from a geographic or spatial sequence to think of that being in conservation or being in a stage of development and not conversing with that property owner because it's, they have 80 acres or it's even 40 acres. And it's all contiguous to Sawtooth Bluffs. So it seems like either we contain Sawtooth Bluffs as it is or we're considering an expansion and it would be basically three, 40 acres that we'd be looking at to make that area all contiguous, whether it be developed or whether it be part of a conservation easement. Also, the tax impact, currently, we get $290 a year from that parcel.
I think it's $560.
Okay, then it's gone up. All right, thank you. Oh, you are correct. It's actually $580.
$580?
Yeah, I was looking at it. So it's $580 a year. So we need to consider that. And then we also need to think about potential changes in zoning ordinance, which are being proposed by Land Services, and how that would impact the property. I know it's a great place for high-end homes. A developer may look at that. But it's also potentially a place where we could have communities of affordable workforce housing in that area. So that's something to consider. Back and forth.
Too bad we don't have another one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So that's a good point, Commissioner Sullivan. I think that, from a community standpoint, I'm just saying, this is how you cultivate community. That's one of the things that should be noted. It would be a courtesy to contact that landowner and just say, we're looking at this. Any thoughts? Just so we have that as part of the piece of the puzzle. I think that's a question should be asked. The other, oh, let's see, that was the primary, but there was something that you were, oh. Yeah, when it comes to the workforce housing or whatever, I think when you're city planners and you're looking at land, you look at what's the optimal use for this land. That land is probably not the optimal use. Then this comes back to the revenue that could be generated, given the fact we're 92%. So if we choose to go a direction, we would want to consider that. So if, if we choose to go a direction, we would, we would wanna consider that in the context of what's the greatest return. Given the fact that if it's prime, you know, prime land, uh, for the nature, you couldn't build some housing. That would command the price that it does elsewhere, so it's just something that.
I'm just stating it, it would be within a five-mile range of the city of Grand Canyon, potentially be divided.
Sure, yeah.
To each.
And it, and it, everything, everything should be thrown out there and, and looked in that context of awareness, that's, that's, that's what I'd say.
Collecting all the questions and, and looking at all of this.
Including refreshing my memory on that map, too. I mean, I came in just when the, this was starting to talk about the bluffs. And I think Commissioner Mills, you've been with them a lot longer than I was. Do you have any thoughts on this?
Thank you, Chair. I, um, yeah, this property's been talked about for a long time. And kinda back and forth and back and forth and out. It's, it's always been considered for the plan. Certainly, any development or non-development would impact the rest of the land. To what extent, I think that's probably debatable. If there are, I mean, if there are homes up there, I don't think it would wreck the rest of the, the park. But, um, I am skeptical that it could be, uh, workforce housing, considering the cost of development. Just to get there, um, and then the infrastructure, uh, city utilities are a long ways away. Not that we shouldn't consider that, it's just, it really does seem impractical. So it seems like it would be more high-end, uh, housing. And, um, you know, you have to draw your lines for, say, a regional park somewhere. But it, my instinct is that would be best suited as part of the park. And I, I think I agree with Commissioner Gamble with, a land swap seems to be the easiest, cleanest. As far as a conservation easement is concerned, you can, um, have, uh, you know, kinda parks and trails. Uh, development included, I believe, in a conservation easement. So even though there would be encumbrances, um, if a concert, if it was put into conservation easement, it could. Those encumbrances could be this, very similar to what the rest of the regional, potential regional park. Would be as well. So there is, there could be, it could go a bad way or a, a way we don't want rather with the conservation of, uh, uh, easement. Or it could go in a very congruous, uh, way with the rest of the, the land, so.
And just for the.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I would think that, um, that awareness that there's Sawtooth Bluffs to the east. There's two hundred and forty acres there. But there's also land to the north and the west and the south that's owned by the U.S. Forest Service. So that is something to consider.
Saves money, I'll keep passing around. So one of the questions should be, we should understand the, um, restrictions or provisions of the conservation easement. We should understand that, so that we're not making assumption. And because obviously, this is a, a working discussion, so anything that comes up, we'll, we'll put down there. And we have, we can have opinions on it, but it'll be assessed thoroughly. And so we just, the more we can get on the table, the better it is, not to make it. So that's, so unwieldy, it's hard to digest. But I think we can, we can put things in a, in a place that helps us to make an informed, disciplined decision. But one of them should be, understand provisions or not relative to, if they'd fit in with what we would hope to do. So that it isn't a surprise because we've been short-sighted in the process.
Madam Chair, I, I think that, you know, part of, part of, when I came into this conversation, I was thinking in my head. You know, there, there is residential uses incorporated into Sawtooth Bluffs. In fact, where the apartment is going up right now is part of that Sawtooth Bluff Master Plan. And there was another area carved out on the, kind of, well, it would be near where the dog park is right now. Now, if you can think about it, if, if, whether it's through purchase or conservation easement and acquiring the land for free. If we add an additional eighty acres on the west end of it, in the northwest end of it. Does that now maybe change something closer to the utilities that are available on the south side of the hill? Where the residential development was originally planned and maybe expanding that by a certain amount. So you could still, you know, acquire the Chief property one way or another. And have that incorporate more residential into the Sawtooth Bluffs. And, you know, and then moving some of those parks and trails or, you know, recreational uses up onto the top of the hill where the bluff, where the Chief property is. So, you know, that's, that's also another way of looking at it, is that this is potentially adding eighty acres into the Sawtooth Bluff Plan. So, you know, then does that change the way that that map gets drawn up? Or, cause, you know, in my opinion, it would be easier to do residential development where the apartment, down by where the apartments are. Versus up at the top of the hill. You know, especially if you're looking at, you know, doing a county subsidized type, you know, affordable housing, small lots types, things like that. Um, I did get, you know, just a message from Niva saying that this property is within the city's zoning restrictions. So it would be totally up to the city.
So you mentioned that the property would be assessed at a hundred and seventy-six thousand?
It wasn't twenty-four, it was assessed at one seventy-six.
And what would it be purchased for?
Well, that's up to Mr. Chief and the board. Um, I did put a comp grid together and my comp grid came up with a value of a hundred and, one twenty-eight-five. Now that, that determines a value of two ninety-nine-five less a hundred and seventy-one thousand for the road. And electrical infrastructure. That was estimated by John Chief's appraisal. I didn't develop that estimate, I used what they had. Cause it's, it's not as easy to argue with the numbers you provided. So.
I think we were looking at this back and. And I think that where we, well, where we ran into issues on this in the land swap. Was that trying to match it, you know, apples for apples. And it, it was consistently something where we were feeling that, no, that isn't really, I mean, it'd be very nice. But it's, it's not realistic. And we have financial stewardship responsibility of the land that we do control, so we have to make sure that it's, it's fair in that regard. But, uh, here again, I mean, if we look at the parcels in the context of our perspective that we'd be willing to put out there. Not that this hasn't been done for years and years and years. Then that's, that's what goes on the table based upon our assessment. And John has the right to, you know, accept or refuse. But it, it's, it's a lot of things to pull together, but there are puzzles that are huge pieces. And there's twenty-five for people that wanna do it quickly, and there are puzzles that'll take you six months to do. Because they're very complicated, but, but I think it's a good discussion, just identifying all the things we need to be mindful of.
So, Madam Chair, would it be appropriate to maybe bring this back in March sometime? You know, I, I will have another conversation with Mr. Chief. And, you know, I will pull up that old conservation easement, I don't know that that would, the language of it would change. You know, certainly I can have Mr. Chief reach out to the Minnesota Land Trust and see if they would still engage. From what I understand is if the county is interested in going down that route, the land trust would reengage. So I can bring, you know, that, that scenario, or I can bring any number of scenarios. And again, if it comes down to, uh, you know, maybe the county wants to make John an offer. That's gonna be up to the county board to take, you know, this information that I've provided and, and to make an offer. I mean, I don't know how, how often the county is buying private land from, uh, a, a, a landowner. And, and making that land now become public. So I don't think that's very common, but I think it is, it has happened in the county. So maybe bringing the three different scenarios and kinda doing a analysis of, you know, what is the financial cost to the county? To do A, B, or C? And what do I see as some of those pros and cons of, of each scenario? Would we like Mr. Chief to be present at the next meeting so that there can be a back and forth dialogue?
Couple of things, one is, in answer to your question, my, my opinion or recommendation would be that we would be more informed before we have that discussion. So we have a better perspective, then, then our dialogue would be informed. You can get off track if, if you don't know what you're talking about, so to speak. The other thing I think that's important to, to, um, to emphasize is that we appreciate the fact that there is a, an ongoing dialogue. And that there's a willingness to try to come out to a win-win situation. And I think that's really important to underscore that. And so while it might get uncomfortable, you know, everybody protecting their, their interest. I, I think it's just good to underscore that, that we're focused on trying to find a win-win situation. We have ultimate responsibility from the stewardship of, you know, what's best for the public. And I think John's indicated he's mindful of that, that's why he's trying to work on, on something. So need to establish and, and reaffirm the foundational basis under which the discussion happens. Which is, we appreciate the fact that we can have this discussion, that he's willing to do that, so.
So I'm hearing that we'd like some scenarios and some associated financial impacts back to the board in March. And then at that time, we can take a look at having another follow-up conversation potentially with Mr. Chief.
Okay.
And who do we know is going to handle what and getting that information back? Because we've identified some things that it's gonna be in the minutes, what we've identified, so we've got bullet points and then who's gonna do what?
I, I can put together like a pros and cons, A, B, and C option. Should we do this at another committee of the whole then? Cause it's gonna be more or less just conversation? Okay.
And then understanding what the conservation.
Yes, fully understanding the conservation, the way it was written in the past. And then, you know, I'll touch base with Mr. Chief and just see, you know, do, do, does he anticipate that there would be any changes? To that conservation easement, given the time that's gone by? I don't know that there would, I think that their interests are to just protect it from development. And then there was some very specific acceptable uses written in, such as like hiking trails, bike trails, a campsite, things like that. And I think the campsite, I think it even said that that would be part of the superior hiking trails management. But we'll, we'll look at that closer and I can bring, I can even bring a copy of the, the old conservation easement agreement.
The other thing, to the extent we can define what a road means.
Yeah.
And, um, yeah, so, also further context regarding the master plan, Sawtooth Bluff Master Plan. So in our, in our twenty-twenty-five budget, we set aside money to be able to do more of that planning. And that's part of that outreach, um, the community outreach. The reason that, that money was needed to be set aside is because, um, it has been deemed, uh, a, a high potential. For a regional, uh, park. But in order to be designated as a regional park and to qualify for that legacy funding. It needs to have, uh, more of, uh, more information in a master plan than what our current master plan has. And so that's what that money is gonna be going towards. Now, if, um, uh, it is deemed a, a regional, um, park. There is money, um, I believe, to purchase property as well. So that's just something to consider. Um, I am skeptical how quickly this would happen, as far as if it is designated. Um, it's a long and, and tedious process that the city has more experience with, but is, has great success with as well. But I just wanna put that out there and, um, I, I'm not, I'm sure John doesn't wanna sit around, it's already been a very long process. Looks like he purchased in two thousand and five. But just that there could be options down the road that would have, if we did go the purchasing route, that would have, you know, not as great an impact. On our, our, uh, levy finances. But again, I think from my perspective, it, it, the, the land is most congruous with, uh, a regional park. Uh, land swap seems to be like a good option, but I think the conservation easement could really fit well. So appreciate any, any further information we can get, but just wanted to add that potential funding option, so.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Mills, so do you wanna find out about the figures on that?
On what?
On, on the legacy funds.
Or if it can be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah.
I mean, if we just had the parameters of that, I mean, it's another piece of the puzzle, but it's.
Yeah, no, I'll just reach out to Mitch Travis, he's involved.
And then the other is, who would contact the, the adjacent landowner? It'd be nice just to know.
Absolutely.
Their thoughts going into this next meeting.
Yeah, it seems, you know, whatever happens with that property, suddenly there's gonna be a forty-acre parcel below it. That's sitting out there that doesn't fit.
Yeah, it, it, it would be carved out by part of the Sawtooth Bluffs on two sides and then federal land on another side and then private to the south. So, yeah, I mean, it kinda does create an, an island of private land within the, the public use lands. So I can certainly, I can reach out, I just don't know what, what is the question that I would be.
I don't know it's a question, but, you know, maybe we wanna make you aware that there's consideration of the property that's north to you. To change hands in potential, in potentially the following ways, a land swap, conservation easement.
Okay.
We, we've been approached and so, because you, your land borders on this land that's affected, we would like your thoughts.
Mm-hmm, yeah, okay.
Anything else, Bob?
I, I think that covers it. I don't think I have any questions for you guys. I, you know, I certainly will be back in March with a little bit more information on the three scenarios. Uh, we'll have the, the survey results from the Sawtooth Bluff survey that's going on right now from Land Services. And I think we'll have, um, you know, a little bit more to talk about next time with looking at the conservation easement and things like that.
Reach out if you would think you need any more ideas or.
Yeah, and I, I mean, if anybody has a thought, I mean, I think it's perfectly acceptable, shoot me an email and I can. If, if you have a thought that you think we should address at the next meeting, shoot me an email.
Okay.
Uh, I was just gonna ask, do we know when there's not a date listed for a transaction on a parcel report? What is, what does that mean?
Far of a sale?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be probably pre-two thousand and six. I know some of them are older than two thousand and six in our computer, but that just means somebody manually entered it in there. So it, it, we would have to go to the recorders to see when the deeds were recorded in that case.
Madam Chair, I, I would just ask.
If we're comfortable identifying the issues that we have addressed. And so, and we know, you know, who's gonna follow up and providing the information so we get to that next meeting. We've got a lot to chew on, so to speak.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's identified in the minutes, almost like bullet points that you have, so we know what we're looking at.
Yeah, I've got some good notes here on, on what to bring back as far as, you know, pros and cons of the, of the two or three different scenarios. Land swap, the purchase, or the conservation easement acquisition. And, and they all have pros and cons, so I can go through and start generating those lists.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Thanks so much for coming.
Yep, thank you all.
Look forward to March.
Sounds good.
Yes, so our last item is to, um, get in touch with Pat.
I can, uh, actually do a call with Sheriff Elias.
Okay, okay.
Works for you?
Okay, before that?
Yes.
Two pets.
Hello?
Hey, good morning.
Hey, guys, sorry, sorry, I can't hear them first.
That's all right. We, uh, we got your agenda item queued up and I got a microphone next to me, so should be, should be good to go.
Okay, would you, uh, how would, how would you like to do it? Would you like me to begin the conversation?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, if you just want to frame up the decision and the considerations that, and a little bit about the process, myself and County Attorney Peterson are here as well to kind of talk through that. But yeah, if you want to just sum up the need and the next steps as you see it, I think that'd be helpful information for the board. Hey, looks like you're on mute. Pat, we can't hear you if you're trying to talk. I still got you on mute here.
Yeah, I was letting Rowan talk. Sorry, I'm getting some massive, that massive echo on my end here, so I've got... Hello?
Yep, we can hear you.
All right. So yes, the body cam program that we want to...
Yeah, this is going to be, this is going to be tough to do. He hung up. Let's go like this. Well, we could do that. I just need to, I need to mute my end, I think.
And then you can hold the phone to the mic, or the mic to the phone?
Yeah.
Hello?
Hey, sorry about that, Pat. I'll mute my mic here, and you should be good to go if you want to give it a try again.
Yeah, absolutely. Is that better for everybody?
Yep, we can hear you good.
Okay. So yeah, I'll just jump back into it, then. The body cam program we want to implement with the sheriff's office is...
That's the same spot as last time.
Maybe tell him to start from that point on. Don't take it in segments.
There's a blip there, he's just going to jump over.
We're waiting. Do we have?
Is he better on the phone?
We can't hear him.
No, no.
Yeah, we can. Yep, we can hear you.
No.
Okay, perfect. I think it was on my end. I think, I have the live feed up, so I was getting some echo there.
Oh, yeah, yep.
Yeah, the body cam program, I'll start this again, want to implement with the sheriff's office, of course. This is really no different than any other body camera, body worn camera than from any other law enforcement agency in the state of Minnesota. We have the policy, we have the protocols, we have everything. Because most of it is dictated by state statute and by the postboard, so there's not a whole lot of, you know, freelancing anywhere with it. And it's pretty, pretty guided, it's a pretty rigid, it's a pretty rigid program as far as how you use the body cameras can be a little dependent upon individual agencies. I know like Minneapolis PD, I think they turn theirs on at the beginning of their shift, and they don't turn it off until they end their shift. Other agencies, you activate your body camera whenever you have contact with somebody from the public, whether it's, you know, just speaking with them officially or even unofficially, if you have contact with somebody from the public, you activate your body camera. So obviously, there's a cost associated with this. It's not as significant as I thought it was going to be. And we do have money in our budget set aside for things like this in our technology fund, and that is, oh, let me find it here, under 26640, but I just wanted to make sure here. It's a technology fund that we had set aside for us, and we keep adding to it each year for these purposes, for any technology, whether it's body cameras, or if we have to upgrade anything in dispatch, our records management system, anything like that. So we, it's not an added expense to the budget. So here we are. Yes, it's under 26640, it's called technology equipment. So that is where the money would be coming from. As far as the policy, I think, I think I gave, or I forwarded the policy to Rowan, and I'm sure you disseminated it to the rest of the board. So yeah, so that's basically the long and the short of it. So I would probably entertain questions that anybody has right now.
Sounds good. Any questions for Sheriff Elias?
Hi, Pat. I didn't know if I was coming in on this after, there's been much discussion on this. It looked like when I looked at the document that Rowan had forwarded, that it was just up for revision, and we were editing it to make changes in compliance with the program we already had in place. But I guess that's not the case. So I just quickly did a little research on this, and the cons and the argument in the research that I looked at said police body cameras are unreliable and too expensive for many police departments, and a lot of them that were employed were with departments or communities that, you know, had a population, it was a million. Many police departments, especially smaller departments with smaller budgets, have suspended body worn camera programs citing rising costs of the cameras, maintenance of the programs, employees and data storage. And as the cameras supporting equipment and network age, costs will only rise to maintain and replace equipment. And they cited some costs initial that in communities what they were and what they are right now. So I guess, you know, this is early in the process, certainly for me, in evaluating this as to its benefits for our community relative to the costs based upon other programs, especially smaller communities, and what it takes to support it. If it's a situation where we have grant monies, and agencies believe that this is beneficial, and so they're going to fund it for us, then it's value-added. But if it ends up adding additional costs that we have to pick up in order to pay for it, then I guess that would be my concern just, you know, off the get-go. Thank you.
Yeah, that's very understandable. We have considered that as well, the ongoing costs of any program specifically, technology seem to be rising, and there's not a whole lot we can do about that, unfortunately. I think, especially public safety, I think we've painted ourselves into a corner with technology, because without it, we have a difficult time operating now. So it's, it's one of the, I guess, for lack of a better term, it's one of the necessary evils that we, that we need to, to compete with in public safety. So yeah, I get that.
Commissioner White? Yes, Pat. Not being an active, actively involved with law enforcement, is there any, obviously, there must be a need. It has been determined by your department that, that Cook County Sheriff Department needs to have these cameras because, could you fill in the blank? I mean, for what reasons? What are we not being able to do now that we will be able to better provide safety for our community if we have these cameras?
Sure. I guess the two terms that I would use would be transparency and accountability. It increases both of those factors for the public, especially when they're, when they're having contact with the sheriff's office. We, believe it or not, we do, we do receive complaints against deputies at times, and having body cameras especially would go a long way to dispelling any frivolous complaints we have against staff. The other benefit is when somebody's working a case, that body camera's going when they're taking statements or just having general conversations with witnesses or victims, you can go back and review that footage and maybe add something to your report that you had forgotten during the conversation. So it's, it's, you can use it as an investigative tool, but it's, a lot of it is, like I said, it's transparency and accountability.
Yes, I'm sorry. If I can, I would just add one piece to your response, Sharon, and that's that the time that the county attorney's office takes to get to trial sometimes can be, as quickly as we try to move the court process, can be a year or two years even, can be longer. So we're relying on the deputies who have had hundreds of interactions with people since that original underlying encounter to remember what happened in that incident and to communicate that in the same manner that the jury interprets it at a jury trial. Additionally, when the deputies have that original encounter and they have to go write a report, they may be at the end of their very long shift anyhow, and then they're, we're asking them to write a report because we need that the next morning to deal with the incustee and make recommendations to the court. So to have that recording would be, I would say, a value to both the sheriff's office and to the county attorney's office as far as going back. We certainly trust the deputy's interpretations of what they, they put in their reports, but everyone's human, and everyone's tired, and people use language differently. So, thank you.
So, Pat, you, we were discussing the cost. So technology is going to enter into this. So the purchase of these body cams come at a price right now. Do you forecast any updating within five years, four years? What kind of updating then are you looking at in the cost?
Um, yes, there will be, definitely will be updates to software and to the equipment itself. I think, I think the end up, if in something like this is right around five years. As far as cost, I don't know. I really don't know. When they first came out several years ago, the cost to update them then, you know, at the end of their life and at the end of the software life was, it was significant. I mean, it wasn't, but what you do and what we will do now, because we have this technology fund basically that we put money into every year and it rolls over, that will be used to, to fund any replacement for, for equipment or software or anything like that. So we, we have taken into account the ongoing cost of a program like this.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Yeah.
So I had an opportunity to review some other county policies in Minnesota. I looked at Otter Tail, I looked at Sherburne. There's quite a lengthy list of counties and also cities and sheriff departments that have these policies. And I looked at some of the significant findings in the field and just wanted to share those with the group. So it documents citizen and officer behavior, which Sheriff Eliasen already alluded to, and captures evidence for court proceedings like Attorney Peterson shared. They also have found in the studies, it reduces the need for use of force, it reduces citizen complaints, complaints that do occur are easier to resolve, it validates an officer's actions, what he or she is doing on the job. It can capture poor behavior, which can then be corrected or help to identify training needs that an individual or a department might have. So I just wanted to share those results in the research that I did.
I also had looked into other counties who were using this system, and I think, whether we like it or not, even being the end of the road, they're getting into some difficult situations where there's physical activity, and I think that will be obviously captured when there is some form of technology on their body showing what actually happened. Commissioner White? Well, we're not exactly at the end of the road. We've got a whole nother country 40-some miles away from us, so there's that activity. But Pat, what is the price? I haven't heard a price. I mean, I haven't, I didn't pull up your line item. What does, how many body cams would you anticipate needing? As in, each deputy would have one of their own all the time. So how many is that? And you'd probably need a spare at least. And then, what does the initial investment cost? Like per...
I am looking for, so we will be purchasing, oh, let's see here. Okay, here we are. Thirteen, I'm sorry, yes, 13 body worn cameras that come in the charging dock, microphones, complete setup through Axon, and the total price on everything
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pat?
Yep.
I would say, and thank you, Commissioner Sullivan, for the, you know, perspective from that standpoint, what's the value? I mean, the pros and the cons. And I can anticipate, especially in today's world, we'll call it that, that establishing the credibility of our position when it comes to court cases, that that's significant. So we can find in our experience to say, since we've had body cameras, we've seen credibility in law enforcement because people see the reality. I find myself in a situation where it can be he said, she said, whatever, and if we had thorough cameras everywhere, it's not what I'm saying. I can show you what actually happened. So I realize that it's just a matter of balancing what is the cost relative to the benefit. So one benefit is going to be the fact that it builds integrity into our processes because we're going to be more mindful. The other thing is, is that, that the public is going to be mindful of the fact that they can't just he said, she said, because it'll be taped. And the third thing is, is that the evidence that is tangible because it's represented, and we just had a court case in which the evidence that I presented was all pictures. And so it makes it easy for the judge, because otherwise it's just a verbal, whose credibility you're going to accept. And if the culture is denigrating law enforcement, then you just tend to have that mindset that certainly law enforcement must not be telling the truth. And so I see the benefit of that. The, this research that I had done relative, it happened to be Baltimore Police, and this was back in 2016, they began their program for an initial investment of 11.3 million. Four years later, the cost had tripled to 35.1 million. And so, understanding costs, it's difficult because things change on us, other than the fact that we know we just passed, you know, another investment in upgrading our technology. And if that fund that we've been setting aside in law enforcement is for technology, that if we're going to rob Peter to pay Paul, and I don't know that because we haven't had that discussion, it's good when we set money aside for technology, but if it's in position to be able to upgrade our equipment, the instruments that we have in our vehicles, I can remember when we changed that to make it more updated. And so we just want to be sure that we're representing things as they will be, so that if we have a fund set aside for technology, if we've seen that we've used a considerable percentage of that for the technology we have in place right now, we just want to be sure we're counting total costs when it comes to technology. And given the fact of what we've seen here, that if costs increase that quickly, all of a sudden, this is why we're seeing... of a sudden, this is why we're seeing some of these smaller counties, even though they had the program, getting out. So it's a matter of prioritizing and recognizing benefit versus cost when it comes to down to all of the things that are, are prioritized in law enforcement that really serve as a benefit to us.
Yes, yes, that's correct. That's completely understandable.
Pat, do you have, like, in the MIS, speaking MIS, Jay seems to always be on the hunt for grant dollars. Would this fold into MIS looking for technology grant dollars for body cameras, or would that be the responsibility of your department? Or are there grants out there that would help with this? Does anybody know? Rowan.
That, that is a good question. I don't know that there are grants out there. I mean, we, we had initially looked at using the Stone Garden Grant to purchase these, but that's, that's not acceptable under that grant. A lot of the, the grants we receive, you know, things like technology and weapons and things like that are not acceptable purchases under those grants. Something specific to body cameras, I don't know if there are any grants. I think there used to be, you know, quite, quite some time ago when they first came out, but I don't know that there are anymore. We can, we can, we can check into it though.
Yeah, most of the grants that MIS through radio communication and MIS gets insight into is through the SECB, Statewide Emergency Communications Board, and then under ECN, Emergency Communications Network, which is a division of DPS. All that to say that the grants that MIS gets insight into and the committees that we're involved in because of the radio communication program that, that lives under MIS are related to communication. So it's, it's grants related to 911, it's grants related to IPaaS, like your Code Red or Everbridge, and it's grants like the one that we just received for replacing armor radios. And so, so body cameras don't typically fall within the range of grants that MIS is, is looking at.
So, Pat, let's just establish your fund, little over fifty thousand, and that's within your budget with the law enforcement, and then you will, as the time goes by, when you get extra side money, however that comes in, you'll put that in the budget for a technology update. Is that correct?
Yes, currently, we, we set aside a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year into our technology budget. I believe that this is the third or fourth year we've been doing this. We, I mean, we're, we're building a considerable sum in there, but unfortunately, the way technology is, I mean, if we had to replace our records management system or our CAD system or anything at dispatch like that, that, that is a significant cost. And this was the reason that the board voted to set this money aside and accumulate it throughout the years, because when these costs do hit, and they're usually due to an emergency or upgrade for some software, but it's, it's not a, I guess it's not a cost that, that is much discussable, because it's, it's public safety, it's notification to the public, it's things like that. So that's the reason that we have this money set aside, and we will keep setting it aside as, as long as the board allows it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Pat?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to clarify, Pat, from a budget standpoint, that those monies are designated, so they're set aside specifically for technology, that means that they can't be used in any other application, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. And so knowing what replacement cost based upon what our experience has been moving forward, a lot of times when you, we set money aside for capital improvement, maintenance, whatever like that, those costs, you get one problem with the building and it can wipe it out. So it just, it's, it's not like we're needing to spend the money to spend it because we got it. We've just identified an area where we think it might be beneficial, we have that money in the fund, and we're aware of, of future costs that we might encounter. So when we look at our lived experience, it basically defines when we might have to tap into that money again. So it just, basically, it's just addressing a stewardship thing of those funds, which it's great that we've been setting them aside, because that's reality.
Yes, that is absolutely correct.
Anybody else? Attorney Peterson is coming on.
Sheriff, I can maybe talk to you about this also, but I know that the, the policy, the written policy that you submitted is a LexiPaul document. I am having a hard time finding some of the statutory requirements that are specific to Minnesota in that, and so I don't know if maybe the easiest way to address that is just to send an email that has maybe some of those requirements, and, and you can address if you think that is in the policy.
Yes, we can, we can definitely have a conversation about that. I think, I think most of the statutory requirements are in regards to Chapter 13 with the data practices, you know, so as far as, like I said at the beginning, as far as us using them, when we use them and how we use them, that would be dictated by individual department policy.
Yeah, and I can, for reference, I'm looking at the requirements under Minnesota statute six twenty-six eighty-four seventy-three, but I can send that in an email.
Okay.
Thanks.
Then, if I can just add for, for next step, then, a regularly, state statute requires a regularly scheduled, a public hearing at a regularly scheduled meeting, and so Sheriff Eliason and I had talked about, you know, there, obviously the sheriff's office would like to get moving forward with this, and so maybe sometime in March, and then before we pick that agenda, to have that public hearing and work with Brady's office to do the public notice and the other things that are required, Sheriff Eliason and Attorney Peterson can just let me know once that policy is finalized, as that's a stated part of the public hearing, is to address the intent of the county to implement a body worn camera policy. Does that sound agreeable, Pat?
Yes, that sounds wonderful.
Very good.
All right. Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you. It, it would also be helpful, especially providing information and context for the public when we have public hearing, things like that, if, Pat, if you could give some examples of similar counties with similar population fluctuations as to whether or not they've instituted this body cam program, and if they've had it in place, some of the pros and cons. So if we could do comparables and, and have that context, I, I think it would go a long way to help inform public.
Absolutely. I can probably reach out to some other counties when I get back in the office.
Any other questions or comments? Well, Pat, thank you for coming on board and getting us to speed with this future plan, and hopefully we'll be able to address it further in March.
All right, thank you, and I apologize again for my, for not being there.
We have time to work you in, and we did.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Thanks. Okay, so our last item here is another Pat, and we're going to talk to the finalization of interview questions and to incorporate our board values, which was supplied by Commissioner Gamble, a list, and we have a chance to look that over, so we'll try to contact Pat.
Hello?
Hey, Pat, this is Rowan Watkins with Cook County. We got you here at the Committee of the Whole with the, with the full board, and we're just about to start discussing the, the core values and, and questions.
Okay. I'm just kind of heading out the door, but I'll hang on, and if there's any disconnect, what should I?
If we, if we lose you, I'll try to call you back. Does that work?
That would be great, yeah.
Okay.
That would be wonderful, so, okay. Thanks much, Rowan.
You bet.
Good morning, Pat.
Good morning. How are you doing, Jimmy?
We're doing. Thanks for your work over a long weekend.
Oh, you bet, you bet. Is it as cold up there as it is down here?
Oh, yes. But it's getting better.
Even colder, I bet.
It's getting better.
Yes.
So I think you had a suggestion here about possibly looking at an additional applicant. I guess we'll start with that. But could you refresh our memory on who actually has ended up? You've contacted folks who, by their number, is not able to remain as a applicant? And just refresh our memory as to the number and if they're still on board.
Okay.
Madam Chair, two, three, and seven are our numbers, if we still have reference to that. Two and three and seven.
Six.
Two and three.
Right, but he's maybe had some additional differences?
We lost him.
Okay.
We'll call again.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
So, the candidates that we have had drop out include candidates, um, two, candidate three, and the third finalist, which is candidate number seven, I was informed that she had an upcoming interview prior to the Cook County interview.
Okay. So you don't know yet on that?
No, I don't know. I've reached out asking when that interview is and wanting to, I guess, dig a little deeper as to her knowledge of Cook County and the Grand Murray area, but I haven't heard back from her yet.
Okay, okay.
So we had selected four previously. There's two that have confirmed that they're no longer in the running, and then one that is questionable.
Okay.
But at this point, she said that she is still interested in the position.
Okay.
Pat, did you, did you ever hear any confirmation from candidate six?
Yes.
Yes, I did.
Very good.
And is still very, still interested.
Okay. So I think you had maybe asked the question about maybe any additional candidates that you've looked into, maybe a background of one or so? I don't know if we want to add any, any more to the candidates? Are we okay with the three?
I, personally, Madam Chair and, and board members, I think that you should have more candidates. You know, it's still a period of time before March 5th. The last thing that I would want is for you to have one or even just two individuals coming up for an interview. I, I think there's value and benefit. People may look good on paper, but when you see them in an interview, you know, a lot of things can change. So I did, I reviewed the candidates. There was one individual who had a, a department head background, who, in planning, who seemed like that person would be a viable candidate. And so I would definitely encourage adding that person, and I almost wonder if it might also be worthwhile for the board to, you know, remove those candidates that are no longer in the running and take another look at that group of finalists.
Commissioner White?
Pat, this is Commissioner White, and I'd like...
Good morning.
...this to be an item that we, we talk about after we finish this, but, so I don't forget. I really would like to see the entire list of the forty-one, just to see, see where these people were coming from, because it seems like a lot of people. And I'm told that to get that information, it requires a board, the board to direct our attorney to request that from you, and then our attorney would be the person to control our being able to review those, those candidates, and I'm sure it would be on site here, and so, but back to your, who is it? There's that, but then back to the, you just said there was one more. Perhaps I could have our interim administrator. I'm, I'm not certain I wrote these down, but, but by your grading system, we actually had, like, we never even considered applicant number one, but we actually had three commissioners put that applicant on their list of five, just like number two and number three. I mean, they have quite a few, and then all the rest had only two. I mean, if you're not doing it by your scoring by ranking them by one, two, three, four, five, if you just do them by how many, how many commissioners were interested in the candidate, then we are missing. And number six, number, number four was another one that had a number of commissioners interested in them. So I don't, I don't know if we should actually just go down and, and review which ones we actually picked again, and then go to the ones that got the most votes, not by ranking, or do we start all over?
Great point, and, and I agree with that. I, I think if you remove the two candidates that have withdrawn from the process, would the board go through and, you know, the ones that we have left, in addition to maybe adding that one individual that I just mentioned, would the board like to go through and give points and then have further discussion and review their selection of who they would like to invite in for the interview? That, I think, is certainly an option that is open for board discussion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just a little context. So of the two that dropped out, they were the, the higher scoring candidates, bringing us from having four finalists down to two, with one of those two being, saying that there's another interview closer to where that... two being, saying that there's another interview closer to where that individual lives that's still hanging out there, but that they are interested, and one that is still very committed and interested. Of the semifinalists that were scored, candidate one and candidate four were right on the edge. They were the next highest-scoring candidates that didn't make the finalist lists, and so I think that's part of the consideration that Pat is putting forward and asking the board to consider whether we would want to include them. And then, just for the context of going back and looking at the other applications of the whole 41 that didn't make the original eight semifinalists, Pat had gone back and done some looking there, and that's the one that he's referencing, who had some planning experience and was a department head, that he's putting forward as another consideration for the board to add to the semifinalists. Pat, did I summarize that accurately?
Beautifully. Thank you, Rowan. I appreciate that.
You bet.
The thing about the work that Pat does is, out of the 41 candidates, you have people that just are gonna submit their name because that's what they do, and they're not really maybe background of county work or involved in a whole lot of anything with the public. And so, that's how he's eliminated. We can't. He's done all that work.
I understand.
So, this is where we are. He said, "I look back, and now I see a department head candidate that possibly would work." So, he's suggesting that we consider that. Commissioner Sullivan?
So, just for the people that have recently walked into the room, we are still in the Committee of the Whole meeting, and we are not in a decision-making mode. We are not making any votes here at Committee of the Whole. We're in discussion. So, I just want to make sure for the people that just entered the room, they're clear.
Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, Pat, I would very much like to get the video interview from that other candidate that you've identified and go from there. I think we should add, I mean, I'm happy waiting until we get that video interview if we need to. Otherwise, I would also be happy inviting candidates one and four to be interviewed in person, because that's who scored and have a number of commissioners interested. So, just want to cast a good net and see what we get.
Thank you. Yeah. And the one issue that we will have is obviously, in terms of getting a video interview, that would take a period of time, but I think if we're talking about one individual, I can certainly reach out directly to him and see how quickly that can be completed. We'd wanna also get the Work Personality Index and the Information Disclosure, so we'd get everything to bring this new candidate up to speed with the existing candidates, so you have all consistent information to look at.
Very good. Thank you on that, Pat. Okay, so are we all good with that? Pat's gonna look into this fourth candidate. Okay. So, you mentioned that you had received the list from Commissioner Gamble on core values assessment.
Yes. Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Gamble, for sharing that. I did have a chance to review that, and I appreciate Commissioner Gamble providing a little more context as to the definitions, and I would not have a problem if that is the board's decision to have candidates review the core values and asking them to identify, I believe it was the top 10 core values. I believe that gives you more insight. I'm not sure that there is a right or wrong answer, but certainly if that would benefit you in making the decision, that's information that I can simply incorporate into our process.
It seems like there's a lot of cross-values here, according to what I had reviewed and the work that I had put into crossing all of the candidates' integrity and values. I know there's some here that probably are new. One I would add is persistence, you know? You have somebody who doesn't drop the ball, that keeps persisting on whatever avenue they need to take in order to get to something done. So, that's just my input on that. So, Commissioner Gamble, do you have any other things you could add to our values and how we could help you understand that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would say that when it comes to the process of hiring, that the recruitment is a matter of prioritizing the most important skills and behaviors needed for an organization. It's up to the organization to identify its values. It's up to an organization to take input from all of the stakeholders, and that information that you get, then, helps you define the criteria that you think is hugely important. I had mentioned before that I had asked for the names of some county administrators that are highly respected and regarded in the state, and I've called them. I've managed to reach all that I intended to call based upon those recommendations and asked them in one word, what is the core or the value. In one word, what do you think you'd need to look for in a county administrator? And then, in one word, what is a huge red flag? And it's interesting, because I was getting consistency in that response. And so, here's why it's important, and here's why you ask it different ways, because a good interviewer understands if you use one word and ask it, if you ask it multiple ways, you use that in combination to refine what you're trying to get at. So, that's why there can appear to be redundancy, but it's by asking it, because people will perceive the question differently, and their response, when you ask it multiple ways, addressing a similar issue. Like, you could just say the word integrity, and if you just left it as integrity, there's multiple things that comprise integrity, just like when you talk about character. There's multiple things that comprise character. So, here's the importance of doing, from my standpoint, I think that once you have the stakeholders identifying what's important to you, that you establish, then, an objective to match the values that you've established, what you're looking for, to an assessment that is based upon relevant education, that's learning experiences that are directly related to the position that an individual's applying for, relevant experience in a similar role. We have hired, in every situation, somebody that's never been a county administrator. That should tell you something. And then, core competencies, that's attributes or personal skills that make someone effective in their role. If they don't have the competencies, if you don't know what you're looking for, if you can't define competencies, then you're setting yourself for failure. Core values, the most important values that guide a person's or organization's actions and decisions. The goal is to experience cognitive congruence, when what you think and believe align with your words and actions. The other thing I would look at is character, personality, traits, reputation, integrity, temperament, a person's unique behavioral style and the way that they experience and react to the world, reputation, overall quality of character as seen and judged by others, and fit, alignment with organization's vision, goals, and desired culture. A vision is a long-term aspiration, while goals are the steps taken to achieve that vision. If you, in recruitment, look at all of these component parts that contribute to what you're trying to achieve, I think that's important, and I will give you an example. In our second hire for county administrator, we identified personal skills, attributes and personal skills, and I think I had related that there were 23 of them, and the consultant gave us that list, and we got that back. And I did that list for myself. What's, what do I think is very important? And then, I looked at the list identified by one of the applicants, and I look at what I'm hearing from county administrators right now, and what I'm hearing repeatedly, I don't prompt them, I just say, "What is the number-one thing that's important?" And they say, "Relational." It's relational. You look at the one person that we had that came in, and unfortunately, we lost within a year, and you talk to staff that were here, and they will say that the relationship nurtured them in their positions and their ability to be able to do their job. They felt valued. They felt that they could be themselves, because this was a person that genuinely cared about people and nurtured them. One of the things we saw in personal skills identified, and what you provided, Pat, was the thing about care for others. If you identify those values from our lived experience, coupled with best practices and county administrators that identify what's important, we need to benefit from those things. We aren't making this decision in a vacuum. So, here, knowing the importance of interpersonal and knowing what we've heard from respected 30 years as county administrator, one word, relational. So, here's the test that we took with 23 things that people rated, one through 23, what they most valued. This is a candidate. I rated number one, interpersonal, which was relationship. The candidate self-scored themselves. My number one, interpersonal, was their number 23, the last possible value. That tells you something. My number two, I think it's very important that a county administrator has analytical and problem-solving skills, because, believe me, there are challenges, there are problems, and you have to be able to analyze it. We just had a conversation this morning about a land offer. If we have no appetite for analyzing things, no appetite for problem-solving with things that get complex, that's setting us up for failure. We have to make a commitment. The diversity that exists in the board as commissioners, we each have strengths and weaknesses, but it is the collective analytical ability that we contribute to making good decisions. So, my number two, I think that the individual has to be comfortable with committing to analyze and solve problems. So, my number two was this applicant's number 22. That's the next to the last as a value. The third was planning and organizing, is my number three. It was that individual's number 21. Do you think that a county administrator should be able to organize and plan, coordinate, facilitate processes for an organization? That is a key fundamental thing that we need to know. The other thing, my number five, was self-management. We need an individual that we know has the integrity to manage themselves and the roles and the responsibilities and stewardship they have. That was their number 20. My number six was employee development. We need to come alongside and equip the people that serve our community. That's my number-six value. That applicant's rated employee development number 16. My number nine was diplomacy. This applicant, it's number 17. If we haven't a career in interviewing and had considerably experienced the good and the bad that we've learned from, we need structures and outlines as a discipline in our decision-making, and when we identified these things as commissioners, that second hire, we came into the interview process, and we made a decision completely based upon the energy and the charisma, ignoring all of the things that we established as being important and what we needed to look for. We completely abandoned the disciplinary process. And so, we, you can go through processes. You can have all the things there, but if somebody comes in the room, is wearing an outfit that you like, and they have charisma, and they smile at you, and you make an emotional decision, you have ignored the discipline that's supposed to be based upon our lived experience that identifies what do we need because we can't replicate what we've had. Yes, there's good, but there's bad, and so, I'm saying, we know, we need to know how to interview, and there are a lot of things that I think that we're completely missing in really understanding the who, and it is the who that's most important. If the education isn't relevant, I can go through who we have right now as the existing candidates, and we have one that has been a county administrator. Others might have been a village, a city. Look at their education. And so, we can, we can identify things that maybe, to the public, look like there's credibility and process, but if we don't know the who, we're subject, we're subject to doing the same thing we've done before, and the message that it sends to our staff is not a good one. There's some staff that have had good experience. There's others that have not had. We want all our staff to be able to provide the maximum, their best self, representing the citizens of our county, and we need a facilitator that is going to nurture and understand the importance of that relationship. And we've had agencies, whatever, in our community where you have staff that have a vote of no confidence, 100% in leadership, and yet the board that makes the decision of putting people in position ignores it, and we can't do that. Our decisions, our thoroughness, has to demonstrate a commitment to best practice and processes that give us the right person. And when I went through and evaluated all the candidates that we had, based upon multiple criteria, not three points on the list that we were given, to 40 points for this and 60 for that, multiple things, that I have a list of those individuals based upon that criteria, and when we had our top ones as identified by the process we did use, pull out, and now we're gonna dip down because we feel we need the numbers, not, not the qualifications, the experience, the education. We need the numbers to have bodies to interview, and when they get in the room, things will be different. Yeah, they'll be different, because we have an opportunity, then, we'll be vulnerable to sway from the disciplinary process, to be emotionally responsive, and it's happened. It's happened. So, I'm not, I'm not comfortable. We said if we didn't see that those people met our criteria, we would be willing to step up and say, "Let's start again," because it's too important to the people in Cook County to be sure that we don't replicate what we've replicated, just to get the process done and put somebody in the position. So, thanks for listening.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamble. So, Pat, you have supplied us with questions, the interview questions. I have 18 of them, and I was just going through some of the values that Commissioner Gamble has already mentioned of integrity and ethical standards, relationships, experience working with others, leadership, management style. So, Commissioner Gamble, would it be appropriate for you to want us to incorporate any more of the values that you have suggested? Or, for my interview, I always feel that when the person is there, that's when I'm going to have the values in my mind and on this paper. How do you want to use these interview questions, change them around, add to them, or leave it as it is? Any comments about that approach? Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Chair. I am happy with the questions. I am also open to amending or changing them. I'm excited to have in-person interviews. I'm excited to have in-person interviews to really get to know who the people are a little bit more. And, and then cross-reference that with their, their education experience, their work experience, and, and the personality index. So, I'm also open, very open, to going through the interviews and deciding that none of the candidates are someone we'd like to hire. So, I think it's important that we move forward and, and, and do the interviews and, and like I was saying, kind of cast that, that larger net. Though they didn't rank maybe as high as, as our first go-around here, I still think there are qualities there that could, could serve our, our organization and community well. So, and just, just, just so that we're on the same page, and, and Commissioner Gamble, I appreciate you reiterating your, your concerns. I think, you know, you stated them well the first time, and, and I, and I'm sorry that, you know, our, our second, I have them too, thank you. But I'm sorry that the second administrator process seemed opposite of, of your values.
Just to qualify, our values, because we as commissioners had identified that, but we abandoned it. But, I mean, I can go through that. A lot of things, learning comes through lived experience, and it comes through going back and walking through what that experience was, which informs us. You know, in other words, where did we go wrong here? And you can, you can speak to it by analyzing what the experience was like and how we stepped out. There's many analogies that could be used in that regard, but anyway, appreciate, but I just want to qualify, it wasn't, it wasn't me, it was us. It just, when the values are defined and aligned, we celebrate that. But we all have an obligation to hold to those things so that, that our responses is an emotional response, that, that collects all the work that's gone in to identify values.
Yeah, I just, I thought you were saying, you ranked it one, the candidate ranked it 23.
Sure.
It was, it was opposite. And so, I'm sorry that, that, you know, incongruency happened there. For the third administrator, we've gone, we went through a process very similar to this process. And our consultants have interviewed the commissioners as well as staff, department heads, to come up with these attributes that I've referenced before. And, and it's maybe not a quantifiable system, but it's, I, I feel like it is holistic, and it did, I think, produce a, a great candidate and administrator in our third go-around. And so, I'm, I'm pleased with our, our process before, and so that's why I'm, you know, hoping that the, this fourth time will, will be fruitful as well. And, and, you know, on those attributes, I, I think, I think all, I guess I didn't go through one by one to match them, but I think, I think between the attributes and the questions, it covers most, if not all, of, of the core values that, that were provided. So, so that feels good, and I really appreciate listing those out and having the definitions. I'm sure that was not a fast task, so thank you for that. As far as the hopeful for inter, interviews are concerned, I think it is extremely important as we do those to look at those attributes and, and see when they answer the questions, where, where they're falling in that as far as their leadership and management qualities, the communications and collaboration skills, organizational awareness and team development, ethical leadership and professional integrity, operational and functional expertise, and, and keep, keep those in mind as, as they're answering questions and to really try to understand who they are as a person, who they are as a professional, and, and where they may or may not fit into our, into our organization and community. So, it, I think, I think we, I think we have a lot to keep in mind and learn from past experiences that, that sw, that, that strayed from, from maybe that awareness of, of what was, what was identified. And so, I feel committed to, to really keeping those in the forefront.
Thank you. We have about 20 minutes, and then the room will be turning over to another meeting. So, any other comments about anything right now? Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes, Madam Chair. I feel comfortable with the process. I also would reiterate what Commissioner Mills said, that if we don't feel comfortable with a candidate after interviews, that we do start over. This is a very important decision for our county. One thing I would like to comment on is, I know that there are not in the, the current pool, but one county administrator. But I would also say skills are transferable, that all of us individually or through someone we know understands that people develop skills and they take a next step, they take a risk. And I would, would not want to eliminate people who have not been county administrators, because I think there are people in that pool that do have the kind of skills and compassion and caring nature, who are fiscally responsible, are good stewards of our tax dollars. And so I think to be able to give them an opportunity to interview with us is important. If we don't take that opportunity, I think we might be missing out on some great candidates.
Thank you. Okay, Pat, so what else can we help you with?
No, I, I think if, just to confirm where we're at, I will invite that additional candidate to the one that I had identified from those that were initially not forwarded to the board for consideration, that one individual. And then, will the, is it the will of the board to rescore individuals at a future board meeting? Or can I get some clarification on that, please?
I think Pat's question is whether or not we'd want to collectively rescore the semifinalists that are still remaining, or whether we would like to use the previous scores and invite some of the, I would assume, candidates one and four because of how they scored. Am I?
Yes, yes, thank you, Rowan. I don't have the documents in front of me, and I'm driving, but yes, that's exactly what I'm asking.
What's a, what's a practical timeline for the video interview with the, the one candidate that you're suggesting to add to our list?
Being that it's one candidate, I will reach out to him immediately, and my hope is that we could have everything done within a week. And then I would obviously prefer to get that out to you in advance, so that you have some time to review that and weigh that in with the other candidates. So, I'm thinking maybe in two weeks, being able to present you with a new, one new candidate and being able to evaluate the others with those two candidates that have dropped out, removed from consideration.
You'd be looking at them the end of February?
Yes.
And I don't know how the rest of our field feels about rescoring candidates. I, I just want to try to integrate this one that we haven't scored yet and this, to see where they fall in. So, I don't know if we hold off on invitations before that, or, or how that should go as far as candidates one and four are concerned, or if we should just go ahead and get things scheduled, because it's hard to schedule, or, and then just see where the, where the next one falls, I guess, or? But then there's maybe five, which is a, a heavy, heavy interview day. So, that, that, that's why I'm asking this, I guess.
So, what I'm hearing here is kind of a, a question on the logistics of incorporating this additional candidate that you're, you're referencing in whether or not they would be a finalist for interviews or not. Do you, do you have a recommendation on how that would go if you can send the, all the other information, the interview, the work personality index, everything else to the board and allow them enough time to review? How can we get you information or collectively the board decide in a, in a way that makes sense whether or not this person will be a finalist or not?
If the board wanted to, I'm trying to think of how this would all play out. What I could do is I could certainly advance the information to the commissioners, but I think any determination on that person would have to be done in a board meeting. So, I don't know if the board would be receptive to a special meeting just to make a determination as to whether or not you interview that individual.
We have a board meeting next Tuesday.
Pat, I had, this is Commissioner White, I have a question. If this particular candidate that you're now considering putting forward, if this candidate didn't make the cut the first time around, why is this candidate making the cut now? I mean, what happened? Like, we just don't need to find candidates just to have candidates. We, we need candidates that, that we could truly consider that could benefit our county. So, why was this candidate not selected the first time around?
This candidate was not selected because they did not have a, a city administrator or county administrator experience or kind of a leadership-type role. I shouldn't say city, county, but a leader, executive director, they have managed a department, but they do not have any experience in managing an organization. And certainly there is potential that this person may do well. We do not, in, in today's labor market, you know, individuals are looking for individuals with experience and without qualifications, but there are individuals out there who have potential and who are looking to be promoted to these positions, who could very well, could do well. That's yet to be determined, and through an interview perhaps you would get a better sense of this person's suitability to Cook County and suitability to be a leader within the organization.
Our last administrator, quote-unquote, only had experience with a department. So, departments vary in size, it really depends on just how much training they've had, what their education's had. So, I'm open to it. I understand you got to draw the line somewhere, so, you know, if you're only going to give us 10, and this person was number 11 or whatever, I get it. But I agree with what Commissioner Sullivan is saying, is that, that there's, there can be aptitude even though they don't have that experience. We just, you find that out in the interview. Or maybe the video interview.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To the point of somebody not having the experience, I, I would say that, and I, I've expressed this before, when I've been interviewed by board for executive director positions, I have responded, and they've asked me, is, is the resume, is the education, is the experience more than important than the person? And I would, I would agree 100% that if you have the right person, that the right person, based upon an assessment of really knowing that person, their aptitude, their competencies, their core values, that they can be an excellent individual. But it, it underscores the importance of using things that measure who the person is, not their resume, not their education, not their experience. Those are all important. But my response to the board that's asking me this question, what's the more important? I always respond, it's the who. Who that person is. They might not have ever, they don't know, you know, what the definition of a county is. But if they are the right person, if they have the skills that we've identified, the core values and the competencies, they can be successful. So I'm not ruling it out. But there are things through learned experience that tell you that you're more likely to succeed if you have these right alignment of competencies, values with the organization. So it goes back to the organization needs to know who they are, what their employees expect, what the community expects, and then align the candidate with those values. If we move forward and we're going to assess these individuals that we're going to bring in to interview, I highly recommend that we add the core values assessment, which they take, just like the personal skills, which they take. And we, as not skilled interviewers, don't try to cover our bases with questions that have to be uniformly asked. All of these things, it's following basically best practices and recommendations, and core values are huge. I want them to tell me, what do you value? Do those values line up with what we value as a county? Do they? We want them to tell us that. And it can't fall through the cracks. So my feeling is, position is, that we need to know, we need to give them an opportunity to identify core values and the, all of the candidates that we choose to assess, that should be another disciplined tool that we use in making our assessment.
Commissioner Mills?
So, I, yeah, I, I guess I'm confused. Do you, you don't, are you saying the question, the 18 questions that we have are not going to, I mean, they may not-
The personal skills?
I'm sorry?
The personal skills questions?
These 18 questions.
18 questions. I've already underlined many of the things that you think are important.
Yeah, and they're-
We would too.
And they, they rated those and, and gave us what their responses and that. You're talking about the questions that are coming up. No, that's not the discipline, the, asking the question is not the discipline, the same as them, just like they did in the personal skills, ranking what it is. And that's what I'm saying, when we, when we had the experience that we did the ranking before, you could look how, that was the discipline. You would look at it and say, oh my goodness, that's, if, if we have experienced respected county administrators saying relational is hugely important, and, and we identify in our values that relationship is important, if our employees tell us relationship is important, and then we, we interview somebody and, or we look at their chart and we interview, and we find out that that's not the case. I'm a person that has a lot of energy. I got a lot of ambition, I got a lot of vision. I have a lot of energy, and I like to be the center of attention. And what is that telling you? What is that telling you? That's telling you, I don't, I want somebody that possesses humility, that recognizes in their role that they're a facilitator. I'm not a leader that makes the decisions and writes the policies. I can make recommendations and things, but it is this board that ultimately bears the responsibility. The integrity in our governance is demonstrated in the people that we hire and put into position as stewards on behalf of this county. And so I'm saying, you take this, just like you do the personal skills. That's why I'm saying, if you went through what normally you're looking at, there are multiple things, education, experience, core competencies, core values, character, reputation, fit alignment, those are ways of doing that. are ways of doing that. And you put together things that help you discipline yourself to make sure you have those pieces, so that when you're evaluating somebody, you're doing it holistically, because you included all those things that are important in defining who the person is. So, yes, I'm recommending you do this. They will come up in the questions, they will come out in the interview process, that we will see overlap in this, but we need them to define, just like the personal skills. Where are your values? Rank them. Rank them.
And so, I guess back to my question, are you, you're feeling like these 18 questions do not address that?
They might, but they're questions. Then why don't we do that with the personal skills? Why don't we just let the personal skills and the-
I'm not sure the personal, what are you talking?
The personal skills are where we rank those things, when we said to somebody, what's your creativity, what's your care for others? That's what we were sent, that's what Pat sent us.
The WPI?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's personal skills.
Okay.
These are core values.
Okay.
So, you just rank them.
Okay. Is that something, Pat, that you've incorporated in the past? Is there like a standardized values assessment? Or, I'm not familiar with all the tools that you're at your disposal.
You know, what we kind of feel is somewhat addressing what Commissioner Gamble brings up, is that Work Personality Index, you know, that in addition to obviously the interview questions, try to get at the type of individual. I, as I mentioned, I'm more than happy to include an additional kind of homework assignment for the finalists, to prioritize those core values that Commissioner Gamble presented, and that information can be provided to each of the board members to use and aid them in their decision-making. That would not be a significant amount of extra work, it would go right into the process.
Yeah, it was just my understa- I just thought there might be a tool, like the WPI, that is exclusively for values, but I think what you're saying is that the WPI is trying to incorporate values, and I would agree, and I agree with the questions also doing that, and so, I'm not looking to rank these in any particular order, like it feels like you like black or white better, and it's just those types of either-ors or quantitative. I think when we do these interviews, to really get to the person, you gotta get away from the numbers and really listen to what they're saying, as far as answers are concerned, and the questions certainly matter with, let's see, what's your management style? Please describe your involvement in budgeting financial process, organizational awareness, describe a mistake at work, that requires some humility, and how do you deal with that situation? And some of them are relational, as far as with tribal nations or with other employees, and so I think there's a lot in there, but I would struggle to rank my values from 1 to 23. That would require a lot of thought, and I applaud-
That's important.
Yeah, that would require a lot of thought, and I applaud those who can differentiate like that. I think there's a lot that, I mean, what about 24 and 25, you know? Or what about 1 and 1/2?
You know, there are, oh, excuse me.
We have a time factor?
I would just say that there are lists that comprise of 50.
Oh, right.
And they're told to pick 2. You can circle 15, but pick 2.
But that seems silly to me, like, that's ignoring 48 of them, kinda, like, there's a lot to it.
No, it's not. You, that's why as an organization, and as staff, and as a community, you identify your values, and that's why you ask proven county commissioners, what are the values? And what you're doing is you're reinforcing that you're ensuring that you're gonna get a better opportunity to be successful, because you know how to go through the evaluation process. So, and you don't have to do it, but they do. If they want the position, I wanna know who they are, because I wanna know who the person is. And it's not predicated on me asking a question, it's predicated on them defining who they are.
So, Commissioner Gamble, maybe it would be good for you and I to meet, and kinda go over the questions that are already provided, and then we can evaluate and say, well, for you, these are the three important things I'd like to talk to them about, and then work that through, because we only have 50 minutes with them, or an hour at the most. And each one of us are gonna come with a different viewpoint, but as a collection, we're gonna hear from everybody who has values that they think are important. Yes?
Madam Chair, Pat has said, it's not a problem to give it to the person, it's not a problem. The board should decide, do we want to include this as part of our informed decision, or not?
And how would that be used at the interview, then?
Pardon?
There's so many of those, how would that be used?
That would be used, because I look at it, and I find out whether this aligns with the values that I think we have as an organization, based upon the information that we have accumulated. And if I find out that, if I find out things that don't have those values that they share, anybody will tell you that if you hire an individual that shares your values, the energy would go in the same direction. If you hire somebody that doesn't share your values, there's gonna be conflict. So, when you ask 30-year county administrator, some portion of these says alignment, the individual needs to be aligned with the values, they need to understand their role and their position. These things identify whether or not that exists in the person to align with that. And so, if we look at the personal skills things, if we line that up, if we don't connect the dots, then that's on us, that's on us. This is a tool to help us, this is a tool to help us. And there's multiple ways, as I said earlier, you can ask questions, you can do interviews, you can see the person, but those personal skills self-assessment, those core values self-assessment are beneficial, and they are really critical in defining the who, hugely important.
So, one thing that we, we all got these. So, one thing that we need to establish for sure, should Pat go ahead and interview the department who has experience as a department head? Should he do that? Is that where we're going? Yes? Okay. Okay, good. So, we have that established, Pat?
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
A decision on applicant's 1 and 4, as to whether or not they'll be included as, like, I think is the other thing that I was wondering.
Yes, thank you, Rowan.
And I've said before, I'm comfortable with both 1 and 4. When we did the ranking before, they rose to the top.
Okay.
For values assessment?
I'm not a fan, because I have all those values, and for me to put one ahead of the other is, do you like your son or your daughter more?
That's not, this isn't, this is something that is, is, this is, best practice is core to assessing-
Those values are all identified in what we have already. It's not the same way, and I'm sorry, you don't appreciate how we got it, but I mean-
Well, that's based upon, that's based upon experience, and it's-
We have experience too.
Yeah, it's, it just really seems puzzling that we're not willing to just ask a candidate to be willing to identify their core values. That just seems puzzling.
I think it's, I'm happy identifying, but it's the ranking that I'm not happy with.
It depends on something, you think when you, I don't, I just say, I'm disappointed in the spirit of this process.
Well, according to all my paperwork, I ranked them according to their experience, their education, and then I highlighted everything that I thought across the board was really interesting, important, of a value. I don't see a lot of difference. There are some, but I don't see a lot of difference in that. Commissioner Sullivan?
Madam Chair, one thing that I like to do when interviewing finalists is to get samples of writing that are done somewhat on the spot, like while someone is waiting. And one of the things we might do is use Commissioner Gamble's list, and have them identify their top five core values, and explain why. It would give us an opportunity to look at how they can compose and write, so part of their written communication style, what they can do on the spot. It would give us some insight into their values, and have them give us a reason why to explain. I think what it might do is help us to think about, values can also depend on how these candidates view our county, and what challenges we're going through. What do we need right now? What do they care about, and what do they see as our needs? And so, I think having them do a short written activity while they're waiting for their interview might be an option to help us identify their values.
Good idea.
Commissioner Gamble, I'm curious to see how you would respond to that.
The, I think you mentioned, Commissioner Mills, that you'd have a difficult time being able to identify and prioritize values. You'd have to put a lot of thought into some of my responses, that if, we need to measure values. If you don't even wanna have them put a list to it, you could just do that, do that now. Identify your top five values, and tell you why you hold those values. If you wanna do that, you can do that, but they're still ranking it, and it takes thought. To have them do it while they're waiting, I think that that's, that's problematic.
Okay, and we could certainly give-
I'm giving an example of, one of the things that we said in the, one of our previous interviews, here's what you're supposed to do, you have a scenario, write that scenario, and create a handout, and give it to the evaluators at the point of your interview. So, we sat down, some candidates give you a three-ring binder. The candidate that we hired came in with a notebook, yellow pad, flipped it over like that, said, I went to the coffee house this morning, I wrote this down, completely ignored what we had asked, which is an indicator, that is an indicator, and you should know those subtle little things. So, my point is, is that, that I'm just interested in measuring core values, because that is identifying the who. We have not identified the who. We've identified the what related to the who. And so, I'm just saying, however you wanna do it, please measure values, because out of your values, you live your life.
I would agree, and I would say, if Pat is comfortable giving something like that as a tool to send to us in advance of the personal interview, I'm very comfortable with that. But I do like to see written work, and I like to see thought process behind that, and I think it would get at the values, it would require that the candidates think about the values and rank them.
We just need to measure values, we need to measure values. And as we, as a board, had identified after our first administrator, he pulled us together, he says, we need to identify our values for this community, people who don't need to know what we value. And my response was, this is a healthy thing, but understand, once you identify your value, people have the right to graciously hold us accountable. That's why we need to know what you value, because we can come alongside and try to affirm the importance of those values when you identify that to us. So, if you say, I'm caring, I believe in building relationships, then when you see something that's alienating people, you say, you know, so, but we have to know, those shared values are hugely important. So, however we wanna measure them, I agree, if they write to it, it's gonna reflect even more, so, but we need, my recommendation, we should do it.
Okay, Pat, so, have you been taking notes?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
So, well, I haven't, because I'm driving, but-
Oh, okay.
And I told Rowan, that was, unfortunately, I had a prior commitment, so I'm on the road going to another meeting right now, but I'm mentally taking notes. My question, I heard the possibility of having individual finalists come in and write, they're on site.
If I may, I think I'm keeping score here, what we'd like to do is have you reach out to the candidate that you brought up this morning, who wasn't a semifinalist, who used to be a department head, and have them complete all the other information that the other semifinalists did, so that the board can review it, and then invite applicants 1 and 4, who are our next closest to being finalists, to be finalists, in light of the dropouts, withdrawals, and then also take Commissioner Gamble's core values, and ask the finalists to write something up as to why they are important to them in order of priority. Do I, did I capture that correctly?
Madam Chair, just to clarify, Commissioner Sullivan, you were just saying that it's an open palette, that the question is just saying, as opposed to saying, what's your top five from the list?
No, I indicated prioritize your top five values and explain why.
I agree with that.
Okay, so, and I'm seeing nodding heads here, so, Pat, I think if need be, when you're done driving, you wanna call and circle back, I can articulate the decision here today.
Okay, so, that would be great, I will do that. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate the input, and we'll get work on this right away.
Okay, thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye now. So, I mentioned our standing committees, and other than that, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Madam Chair.